Good evening. This is Mayor Shave. It's Wednesday, April 12th, 2023, at 6:30 PM. And I called the Avenue City Council. We need to order. First thing I would like to do is acknowledge a friend that we just learned that we recently lost, John Straka. He was quite a supporter of our communities, did a lot of things for our youth and sports and so forth, lots of other things. I'd just like to take a moment of silence to acknowledge John. Thank you, everyone. Deputy City Clerk, will you do a roll call, please?
Ellis?
Yes.
Brantley?
Here.
Aiken?
Here.
Catchman?
Here.
Lawrence?
Here.
Mackey? Morrison?
Here.
Crotchini?
Here.
Ross?
Here.
Shaw?
Here.
Seedorf?
Here.
Taylor?
Here.
Shave?
Here.
Thank you.
I move we approve or excuse Councilmember Mackey tonight.
Second. Motion was made, seconded to excuse Councilmember Mackey. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Would Ms. Morrison like to lead us in the flag salute?
Flag allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation for God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Mayor Shave, I know of two additions to the agenda tonight, so I'll make a motion to add one. So one addition is a discussion item for an ordinance on use of controlled substances in public places that we'd add as item number four to Public Safety. And then I believe Councilmember Shaw has one too, so maybe I'll motion.
Thank you. Public Works also has a resolution to add related to the building project, a resolution designating applicant agencies in Washington. This is part of a checklist that's due on Friday, and we want to run through the council to approve the grant application.
So I move that we approve the agenda with those two additions.
Second.
Motion was made, seconded to add these two items to the agenda. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I see John is on the video. Hi, John.
John?
You're muted. Okay.
Do I need to do anything to take back my motion to excuse him?
Yes.
Okay. I move that we do not excuse Councilmember Mackey because he's now present. Unexcused?
As Councilmember Mackey is-
Reconsider the motion?
Actually here, if we rescind the motion.
I move we rescind the motion for Councilmember Mackey. Write that one down.
Motion was made and seconded to rescind the motion excusing Councilmember Mackey as he is here.
Thank you.
Any discussion?
Only on the condition that he unmutes his speaker phone, if he's able to.
Welcome back, John.
Hi, John.
We'll get a thumbs up if we can't get the unmute to work.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, I believe we're on to the consent agenda now. So there's a few items in our consent agenda, including minutes from our March 22nd meeting, accounts payable and payroll, and the homeless expense report for the month of March. I move that we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion was made, seconded to approve the consent agenda. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I'm going to go to public comments. Any comments from the public? Come up to the podium, please. Seeing none, we'll move on to presentations. Elections 101 from Alexandra Kenyon. We're moving fast today.
Coming, yeah, you are. So, thanks. Thanks for having me tonight. I'm here for Hillary as she's in Hawaii, enjoying some vacation. But I'm here tonight. Ruth has asked me to provide you with some information. Hopefully, you've heard most of this before, but which is a good reminder as we head into towards election and campaign. We're in the middle of election and campaign season. This is kind of my yearly scare tactic to remind both elected and city staff to think before you act when it comes to election-related activities. I'll start with a little bit of a disclaimer. As your assistant corporation counsel, I can give general advice as to how to approach election activities. But if you have specific questions, I'd suggest that you provide those to Ruth, and Ruth can obtain guidance from PDC, the Public Disclosure Commission. So first, under the applicable campaign statutes, city staff and candidates, which it would include incumbents, cannot use agency facilities to assist in electing a certain candidate or promoting or opposing a ballot measure. So facilities is defined within the statute. This means you can't come into City Hall and use stationary postage, machines, equipment, employees during their working hours, vehicles, office space, publications, anything like that. If it's in City Hall, you probably can't use it to support a ballot measure or a candidate. So specifically, I wanted to talk about this in terms of the regional, excuse me, the RFA, which is most applicable here with Aberdeen. And just some bullet point reminders. The statute does not allow a city council to express, excuse me, does allow a city council to express a collective decision or to actually vote to oppose or suppose or, excuse me, losing my voice, to support or oppose a ballot proposition so long as the council has provided notice of the meeting that it will include this discussion, and also that members of the city council and the public are afforded an equal opportunity for the expression of an opposing view. You'll hear this a lot in PDC guidance and their publications, that it, if there is going to be some sort of discussion, it needs to allow both points of view. It needs to be content neutral or both sides. And the next bullet point to keep in mind, council members are also allowed to make statements in support of or in opposition to any ballot proposition, such as the RFA at an open press conference, or in response to a specific inquiry, which I've seen probably the most. So this means that council members, you know, you're allowed to keep your opinions and your views. You may engage in these political activities on your own time, but again, keeping in mind that you cannot use those, excuse me, public facilities I discussed earlier. Also, keep in mind, and this is really important for staff, but I think everyone should hear the same message, you can provide information to the public if it's part of a normal and regular conduct. That's a defined term in the statute of the city. And this would mean that if it's normal for the city to provide information about city activities, such as an RFA, then it may continue to do so. In this instance, you have to, the city needs to be very careful to be only providing information, not providing any sort of viewpoint, no opposition or promotion. If you've read the newspaper recently, or maybe you've heard in the past, cities have gotten bopped for, I think it's inadvertently, but using language that shows they're leaning one way or the other. So Ruth and I have talked about that, making sure that all publications that come out of the city are content neutral. So those are kind of my key points for tonight. Keeping those in mind, I will follow up with an email to the council with some great publications from the PDC that outline these in even more detail that you can read to put yourself to sleep at night. As always, let us know if you have any questions or route questions to Ruth, and she can route them to us.
Very good. No questions, anyone?
I was just going to ask, that includes email too as well, right, Alex? So if somebody were to email us asking us if we were in favor or opposed to the RFA?
That's exactly right.
Okay.
Good clarification.
Right.
Thank you, Ally.
Thank you.
I don't have a mayor's report tonight, so we'll move to council reports.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion that as part of our typical procedure on any vote, that the mayor, when asking for the vote, request not only those in favor and those opposed, but also as part of a normal process to ask for any extensions.
Second.
Motion was made, seconded to change the procedure for voting. Any discussion?
Yes.
Go ahead.
And I raised this issue in an email a few days ago or last week. I don't know, Council President Cockman, Catchman, sorry, brought up some good points. It was appreciated. But every other deliberative body that I've been in, as a board member or a voting member of any kind, it's always been typical procedure and process to request any extensions. And I'm not anticipating at this moment or time that I'm necessarily going to abstain from voting on any particular issue or vote. But I think it's just a good procedural process to be able to also ask for those and get those on record and not have to worry about, oh, gosh, I forgot to ask or to note that I'm going to abstain on a particular vote. So I don't think it would add a lot to our time procedures here, just to say those in favor, those opposed, and any extension. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Councilmember Shaw?
I appreciate it, the information that this might come up because I consulted Robert's Rules of Order, and then I went to the MRSC for guidance on how public bodies should handle extensions. And what is being proposed is not best practice for open government practices. One is that Robert's Rules of Order, and on a voice vote, an extension, if you ask for extensions and they're just calling someone out, and if it's a voice, if it's a roll call vote and someone needs to abstain, then the burden is on them if they have a reason to abstain. And if we have, if a council person, which is a municipal council, is different than a nonprofit organization or something like that, if we have a conflict of interest, the burden on us is to actually recuse ourselves and step out of the meeting and not participate at all. So the burden is on us as each elected individual person to handle whether or not we abstain. And the only, when you go onto MRSC, the only cities that have handled extensions differently are when an extension does not change the outcome. It is counted as a yes vote. So by not saying anything, the presiding officer decides whether the vote carries. And if there is any clarification, then a roll call vote happens, and that person can abstain at that time. So when you go to the MRSC and you see the five or six cities in the state of Washington that have adopted rules for extensions, you can see that those are cities that are handling it differently than Robert's Rules of Order. So that would be my two cents, and I'm not going to support the motion.
I appreciate the input. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Do you need to keep your motion?
What do you think, Casey? Rescind it? I moved you rescind my motion.
Second.
Motion was made, seconded-
Actually, the original seconder has to-
Rescind my second.
Okay.
Motion was made and seconded to rescind the motion. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Any other council reports? Okay, I'll move on to staff reports. City Administrator?
Thank you, Mayor. I've submitted my report. It's found in the packet before you. I just wanted to make note that our first community meeting will be on Tuesday, April 18th, and that will be towards five and six. And this is a community discussion on homelessness, where we will be taking feedback from the community and building a strategy on that. On April 27th, we have a, one of these community discussions with the unhoused community. And so wards one and two will be on May 2nd, and wards three and four will be on May 23rd. Does anyone have any questions? Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any directors' reports? Anyone? Parks Department.
Thank you. Stacy Barnum, Parks Department.
It's on.
I'll do a better job.
Thank you.
Take it on the mic. Okay, tonight I have three items on the agenda. The first two items are discussion items for the council. The first one is regarding the cost estimates for improvements to 118 West Wishkaw. This was based on a request from the council after the Board of Museum and History workshop. The second item is a recommendation from the RV Park Committee and the Aberdeen Park Board regarding the potential RV Park project. And the last item is an action item. It's items to be assessed into the museum collection. I do have an update to the cost estimates already. I spoke with KONE regarding the elevators or the elevator improvements that are needed. The first estimate I received was from the technician that was working on site. He said to upgrade the existing elevator so that it meets today's code and so that they can order parts. For the elevator would be about $200,000. The estimator for KONE called or emailed me and said it would be closer to $350,000. In addition to that, there's a drain pipe or some type of pipe that runs through the elevator pit that cannot be there, that will have to even have to be removed. And there's water intrusion into the elevator pit, which is causing oil and water to mix. So an oil-water separator would need to be also installed in the elevator pit. That's about $50,000 if we have them do it. There is a possibility that city staff could do that at much, much more reduced costs. We are currently doing required improvements to the elevator to get us in compliance with labor and industries. So once we meet the labor and industries compliance and address the water in the elevator pit, then the elevator, we can use the elevator. The $350,000 is kind of the same thing that we're running into here at City Hall. It's the elevator will be running, but at some point it could break down. And so that would be the cost to make that necessary improvement. The other update is to the fire suppression system upgrades. So there's currently a wet system in that building. I met with the night fire out of the Tacoma area, and he and I met at the building. He went up in the attic, and there's a wet system in the attic. And that's not a good thing. If the attic's not heated, and when we have freezing temperatures, those pipes could burst and leak, and there's not people regularly in the attic. And so we wouldn't know until the water started running down from the floors. So he recommends replacing the sprinkler system that's in the attic with the dry system. The third, second, and first floor, the wet system that we have is adequate. It just needs new sprinkler heads, and it needs to be monitored. So that would be a cost of about $53,000. The other item that was added since the workshop, I met with the site committee for the Board of Museum and History. They received some recommendations from Al Gozar from Harvard Architects, and he recommends that we make the two sets of doors at the entrances to the building ADA accessible. And I also added his recommendation of upgrading the restroom on the first floor so that it's also ADA accessible. Did anyone have any questions on the cost estimates?
I have a question.
Yes.
So I assume these are just preliminary estimates, that before any work is actually completed, we'll actually obtain competitive bids from at least like three companies?
Yes, we will comply with the bidding process.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Okay.
Okay. And then I wanted to announce that we do have a vacant position on the Board of Museum and History. Information is posted on the museum's Facebook page, the city's Facebook page. It's also on the city's website on the Board of Museum and History. And we had someone that resigned from the Board of Museum and History, so they had a term that ended in 2024. If you're interested in serving, they meet on the first Tuesday of the month at 6:30 PM. There's an opportunity to meet in person, or you can zoom in. We do a hybrid version. And those letters of interest should be submitted to Mayor Shave, care of our city administrator Ruth Clemmons at r.clemmons@aberdeenwa.gov by Friday, April 21st. And lastly, I just wanted to provide a few updates. We are not in the top six for the Trails Grant for the RCO. There were about 40 applicants, and they're only funding the top six. So I'm working on some other potential funding sources because fixing the Trail System at Stewart's Park is a top priority. So I think I have some other opportunities for funding, and also a partnership with one of our local carpentry programs to do the labor. So I'll keep you updated as I work through that. And the Senate did release their proposed capital budget, and the good news is, our project for 118 West Wishkaw is included in the Capital Heritage Grant Program. So we should be receiving the funding to hire the consultant slash capital project manager slash construction project manager to help the city with how we would like to use that building and do the designs, architectural and engineering. The Rainier Foundation awarded the Parks Department a $2,000 grant for Park and Play, so we appreciate their support. That was kind of a last-minute request. AWC is no longer doing the SEEK grant program, which is a $20,000 grant we received the last two years. Yeah, I think that was a COVID thing. So it's one of the downsides of COVID not being around. So we're working on a couple other small grants to cover the costs for our Park and Play program. And lastly, at San Ben Park, there's a picture of the new team at Teeter Totter that's been placed at San Ben Park. We got a smoking deal on that. One of our vendors had one that was just sitting in his warehouse. It's an $11,000 piece of equipment. He sold it to us for $4,000. He installed it for free and delivered it for free. So I appreciate that Cascade Recreation did that for us. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Lots of good news there. Okay, any other staff reports? Okay, we'll move on to Finance Department. Chair report by Councilmember Paratina.
Okay, we have a request from Finance to approve the citywide electronic fund transfer policy, and we adopt it.
Second. Motion was made, seconded to adopt this report. Is there any discussion?
I have one item for discussion.
Okay.
I was reviewing the policy this afternoon a little bit more closely, and I noticed that there wasn't a control related to accounts payable transactions and modifications to account numbers and how those are handled. So I wanted to see if we could add in some considerations for that, because there is really high fraud right now for people calling in and pretending to be a company and trying to change their account, somebody else's account information. I talked to Ruth about it, and she didn't think that there are a lot of accounts payable transactions that we're doing right now that are done in this fashion, but it seems the world is going in that direction, and at some point, the city might not use as much paper. So I don't know if the best thing to do here would just be recommend tabling it for a week or till the next council meeting. Okay, I move for that reason that we table this till next council meeting, just to add that one bullet in.
Second.
Motion was made, seconded to table this request. Is there any discussion? Under discussion, Councilmember Shaw?
I would just add that while Council President Catchman is saying that there's increased fraud in this regard, I can say that I have personal knowledge that it is happening, and it's really hard to unring the bell when someone has managed to change an account code and charge your department tens of thousands of dollars.
Okay. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Move on to item two.
We have a council discussion item about the estimated building improvement cost for 118 West Wishkaw. Does anyone have any comments?
Okay.
Okay.
All right, we'll move on to Public Safety. Chair report by Councilmember Ross.
Thank you, Mayor. We met this evening at 5:45 PM, and discussed a number of things that were brought forth by each chief of the department. I'm not going to read all of this this evening, but one important thing is, this is National Public Safety Telecommuter Week, and it's an honor. We'd like to honor and recognize the hardworking individuals who work behind the scenes to keep our community safe. These dedicated professionals answer emergency calls, dispatch our police and fire units, and provide critical support to those in need. They are the first responders. We give our sincere appreciation to those at Grace Harbor 911. And other information we talked about is that call volumes continues to be very busy, and we're working hard to get our numbers up. Both departments are needing new boys, so we're working through the process on that. Did you want to speak to somebody else? Okay, because you have three items on the agenda. So moving on, we have a request from Public Safety and the Fire Chief recommending that the city council authorize the mayor to sign an internal, or inter-local agreement between the city of Aberdeen and Grace Harbor Fire District Number Two for joint structured fire response. I move we adopt this.
Second.
Motion was made, seconded to adopt this report. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries.
Number two, a request from Public Safety and the Fire Chief recommending that the city council allow the Fire Department to enter into an agreement with Public Consulting Group for the purposes of completing the required Medicare round ambulance data collection survey. I move we adopt this. I move we adopt this report.
Second.
Motion was made seconded to adopt this report. Is there any discussion? Under discussion, Stan?
Chief had a few questions. We covered part of this. I had some questions during the Finance Committee meeting, although I know this is a public safety issue. So right now, this is basically a federal unfunded mandate. We kind of have to do this.
You are correct, yes.
And we don't currently, in your department or in other agencies, departments of the city, like with Finance, have a method or a way to readily track and gather this data and submit it?
No, we can pull data based on what they're asking for from the consultant and that they will go through and mine that data, if you will, for what it is we really need for this report.
And do we have any idea of how frequently this kind of request is going to be made of us?
From Medicare, I don't actually have an answer to that. This is the first one that I'm aware of that our department has gone through at this level for a Medicare audit. I'm calling it an audit, lack of a better term. And this is a three-year process through Medicare that they're in year number two and we just got drawn out of the hat for year number two. Every agency in the country is going through this process. So just my ballpark guessing is at the year three after '24, it's going to take them a couple of years to really realize what the data is, make their decision with that information, and that that will go on for a number of years before they want to agree with it.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Third, we have a request from Public Safety and the Fire Chief recommending that the city council authorize the mayor to sign the mobilization cooperation interlocal agreement between the City of Aberdeen and other local fire agencies for cooperative response by local agencies for state wildfire mobilizations when requested. I move we adopt this report.
Second.
Motion was made seconded to adopt this report. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries.
And finally, we have an item that we added to the agenda. This is a discussion item. As Chief Green stated this evening at our Public Safety meeting, the Lake Fix has passed both parts of the legislature and looks to be that it will be passed, which is really, really good for our police department. It will help them specifically in discussing or working around controlled substances. It had been suggested that we, as a city, adopt an ordinance ourselves. But if this passes, the state's legislation would supersede anything we did within our city. But just in case anything happens, we would like the council to consider approving, moving forward with having legal, put together an ordinance for us to pass down the road if it becomes necessary. And we were provided, Casey provided two examples, one from Richland and one from Bellingham, which they could use as a model in drafting ones. So I'm open to anybody's thoughts or suggestions on this. Go ahead, Liz.
I think the idea is good, but given that this is in the legislature and we may come up with something in session, I'd rather let AR staff and new staff time to do some of it. It may be not necessary.
And so we're recommending waiting to see what happens with the legislature, but to be prepared if it doesn't, if something happens to it, to be prepared to move forward with the ordinance.
Is there a particular urgency to wait to see what happens at the state before we take any action on this?
Just the cost to the city.
Yeah, I mean, why don't we then just wait so we don't expend costs if we state? Also, can the city, apparently the cities can adopt a rule, put an ordinance in place, even if the state doesn't have something similar that says you can do this? It wouldn't be overridden, recluded from state?
Can you answer that?
Correct, so if the legislator does not in fact pass the Lake Fix, that's when we would do the ordinance that would criminalize the usage of scheduled narcotics.
And I have one last question. So if this isn't a state law, but the cities could have done this, why haven't we done this before now?
It's just starting to kind of become popular amongst the states, army, the cities. That's where we're at.
It's been under discussion.
Yeah, we started in January looking at this and then the Senate introduced Bill 5536. So we're just kind of waiting to see how that came out.
Thank you.
Any other? Okay.
So I think at this point, we'll wait and see what happens.
Thank you.
Public Works Chair Report by Councilmember Shaw.
Thank you, Mayor. Actually, I do have one thing I wanted to share with the council. This is regarding the Young Street Bridge. And our public works staff shared with us at our meeting yesterday that they've continued to talk with state and federal officials about how we can use the money. And one of the key things that we wanted to ensure we could do is an options analysis. And we are being told that the state will support our proposal to seek proposals that either replace, rehabilitate, or move the bridge. And that is going to get us a lot closer to the facts we need to decide, you know, what the nut is or the cost is of the various options that are being considered. So we have the $23 to $25 million, but the analysis and our request for proposals will allow us to get different scenarios from potential bidders. And that should go a long way toward answering what we think we can afford to do. So, and other than that, we also had a discussion. They shared that they asked to what extent could the funding that's being made available to us memorialize the area and the bridge? And they said there is room within that to do that as well. So we are continuing to explore all options and nobody is staking out any lines in the sand. We're just collecting information on how we can best use this money that's made available to us.
Councilmember Cedar?
Oh, she answered my question. That was great, appreciated, thank you.
Any other?
That ends the chair report, so we'll move into our business. And we have a request from Public Works and the Public Works Director recommending that the mayor be authorized to sign a professional service agreement with various incorporated in the amount of $52,900 to prepare an emergency action plan for the South Side levy. I move we adopt this report.
Motion was made seconded to adopt this report. Is there any discussion? Under discussion, Councilmember Cedar?
I just had a couple of quick questions. So what is the scope and need for an emergency action plan? In a nutshell, kind of what is an emergency action plan?
The emergency action plan is required from Army Corps and basically is for any structure, dam, levee, is what the process is for callouts. For in the case of emergency, what are we going to do? What is the process to make sure it's safe, to repair it, to address?
Like a failure of the levee?
Absolutely. That's what it's, and even if there's a tsunami coming, what are our steps to address with our levee?
And we've never had an emergency action plan in the past?
It wasn't required on the levee, or maybe it was required, but it never got put together when the levee was designed and we're trying to get it recertified. And as we submitted for recertification, then they told us that we had needed to have an emergency action. We have them currently for Mount Uskey Dam, Lake Aberdeen Dam. We have them for our dams, but we didn't have them for our levee.
Thank you.
Any other discussions? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item number two from Public Works, we have a request from Public Works and the Public Works Director recommending that the mayor and Public Works Director be authorized to sign all agreements and documents necessary to execute the Department of Commerce contract 2296515012 to facilitate reimbursement of project-related expenses. I move we adopt this report.
Second. Motion was made seconded to adopt this report. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item number three from Public Works is a request that the Public Works Director is recommending that the city council authorize the purchase of a snowplow and sander with an added budgetary cost of $4,450. I will read out this report.
Second. Motion was made seconded to adopt this report. Is there any discussion?
Do you? Hopefully, I'm looking to purchase the same southern equipment. So that would, between the cities, we can have some leverage with snow and then.
For $4,450, is this like?
So this is in the budget. It's just that when they've costed it out, it's going to cost more than was budgeted. And so just in the interest of transparency, they're sharing that out. You know, that's going to cost more, but also, you know.
Yeah, we went by state bid prices. So last year when we did our budget, we went by what it cost the state bid for 2022. State bid price for 2023 was $5,000 more. We have the money in rental reserve. We had the $15,000 that we budgeted, plus we have the supplemental request that's available in our reserve accounts. But since we were going up by a third, we wanted to bring it forward just to make sure that supplemental request is documented.
Okay, I'm glad that was clarified. That was going to be a smarty. $4,500, what do you get? An old Cadillac bumper welded to a piece of frame?
We had the same conversation in Public Works.
How did you know?
We also supported it because it was noticed this past winter that we had our emergency events, that our staff and crew were able to get out there and make sure some of the important areas in our city were sanded and plowed. And it was appreciated.
Very good. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries.
Then number four from Public Works is a request from Public Works and the Public Works Director recommending that the city council authorize the repair to the step screen at the wastewater treatment plant at the cost of $22,000. I move we adopt this report.
Second. Motion was made seconded to adopt this report. Is there any discussion?
Few questions.
Under discussion, Councilmember Cedar?
I assume this gets directed to Mr. Sanger. So the different types of equipment that we have at the wastewater treatment plant, I assume this is one that's got a certain lifespan and it's exceeded its lifespan?
The Huber screen is a screen that separates what they call rags out of the influent flow at the wastewater treatment plant at the headworks. It's currently not working. We had hoped to get another three years of it. It's due to be replaced in three years. So that's why we have chosen to repair it instead of buying a new one for 80, I think it was $82,000 to buy it new, and $30,000 to repair. We hate the idea of spending $30,000 for only three years, but it's a piece of equipment that is required.
So are we going to, three years, need to spend $80,000 or more to replace it?
Yes.
And then other equipment, is there a standard life cycle that you look at and consider and take into account when you're budgeting to know that every so often you're going to have to replace a certain amount of equipment?
Asset management is what you're talking about. We are working on our asset management plan right now. We have not typically managed our assets in that manner. We maintain them and repair them as much as possible until they are no longer usable and then we replace them. But we have not budgeted that way so that, you know, with the depreciation schedule. But we are working towards that model.
Great, good to hear.
At the direction of our city administrator, so.
Are you agree?
Okay, thanks.
Any other discussions?
You missed a good tour. We got to see that thing firsthand just before you came.
Sure, I could make a special tour request.
You don't want to. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Mayor, I think this is where Public Works wanted to add an item.
Resolution.
A resolution.
Okay.
And we have a resolution designating applicant agents from the State of Washington Legislative Pre-Disaster Mitigation Program Sub-Application Innen. I will approve this resolution.
Second. Motion was made seconded to approve this resolution. Is there any discussion?
I would just, for clarification, I would just share with the council that this is another piece of the puzzle in the North Shore Levy Project. As they are preparing to finalize a grant for the due on Friday, they were checking this twice and realized that it would serve us better if they ran this through the council. And that's what we're asking them to do.
Any other discussion? Oh, go ahead, Rick.
Just clarification. The answer referred to it as a grant and that's what this is. But we've already received the grant. We applied for it already. This is obligating the money. So it was the $4.5 million or $4.9 million. We have received the money. This is just doing the obligation paperwork that we need to do to receive it. They've already told us we got it, but so it was money we received.
They told us at the last minute.
They're holding the check until we do that.
Yeah. Okay, moving on to special agenda items.
We haven't voted on it.
We haven't voted on it, I thought we did. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries.
This will be Resolution 23-11.
Okay, now moving on to special agenda items.
All right, for special agenda items, we have three items tonight. The first one being a request from the Parks Director recommending that the city council authorize that accession of numerous donated items into the museum collection. I move that we accept this request.
I second.
Motion was made seconded to accept this request. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries.
And next is a discussion item regarding vacant buildings. It's not very often that something comes across the council's desk that could be a revenue generating opportunity for the city. So it's a little bit exciting to have this come across. And I think it's been something that's been recommended by people within the community as well. So really nice to hear their feedback. But just looking for the council's thoughts and comments about the city putting together a program for vacant buildings to hopefully encourage those buildings to come back to life and possibly use some of the money that comes from that program towards the Good Neighbors revolving loan fund.
The general idea of this is all these old buildings that are vacant in our downtown look bad. They make us look bad.
Yeah.
They also provide a place where those that are living on the street to hang out. And if there's activity going on, any of the buildings that have activity going on, you don't see that. And so trying to come up with a plan to create some kind of activity, whether it be just make them look better, maybe get the Grace Harbor Art Group involved and do things inside the windows that looks nice and active and all this sort of thing. So I'm not sure how this will play out. You know, it's all new, wanted to bring it to the council. You know, maybe something like similar to the rental program of some sort where they're signed up, registered. I don't know, maybe some kind of small fee of some sort that goes into it that would, instead of going into general fund, would go into the revolving loan fund for. the revolving loan fund for facade improvements, loans and that kind of thing. Um, I just feel that something needs to be done. It, it looks bad, it brings on a bad response from those looking for a place to hang out at night or during the day, and, and we just need to do something to try to improve that. So, that's what this is about. Lisa, did, did you want to say anything? You were...
Yeah, thank you. The mayor, um, this is about Community Development Department of the city. The mayor had asked, um, the city administrator to, uh, staff to take a look at vacant building standards, what we can do, is there a tax we can implement? There was a whole barrage, the things that we could do to improve the look. And we heard, heard this loud and clear through the years at the city that, you know, you have a lot of vacant buildings, you're just letting them deteriorate, what can you do? Can you move so-and-so into them? And there's just been a whole lot of conversation revolving around that. So, um, we took a look at that within the Community Development Department to see what kind of, what, what other jurisdictions were doing regarding their vacant buildings and whether or not we could implement that as staff, what that would look like, do we have enough staff to do that? So, we, um, did the research, we used MRSC, we pulled up different, various cities that have, um, similar ordinances in place, and we took a look at the programs and thought, yes, this is something we could, we could easily do, um, would require a little bit of work. And the city administrator, part of that is it's a registration program, so there would be a fee. And the city administrator brought up the idea that, that fee, you know, what about if it goes into the Good Neighbors Revolving Loan Fund, so you kind of have a characteristic program? So, you, you know, you may be paying a fee for having a vacant building, however, we have a program over here that could help you fix up the building to take, you know, to not have certain things. So, really primarily, the, the conversation piece is whether or not the City Council would just entertain having a draft ordinance be brought forward for conversation at City Council, or do you want to have further conversation in a workshop regarding this program and what it looks like? Um, we do have a draft ordinance that, um, we'd be willing to share of some, of things that we're thinking of, um, but leaving that decision up to council of how you would like to see this coming forward, if it's something you are interested in, um, but we are prepared to answer questions, um, once, you know, when we go down that path.
And, and I think it's important to note that there are varying degrees that we can implement this program. At this point, um, we would have a phased approach where most of the work that the program would require of these vacant buildings would be cosmetic. Um, we've seen some cities escalated to repairing, making major repairs, plumbing, you know, fire code types of things, so, I mean, we could, we, it's really up to the City Council to see how far you want to take this particular program, or we, you know, we could propose different ideas, but ours was to see how much success we could get with just the initial cosmetic storefronts, you know, not allowing, um, boards only for a period of time until, or with proof of, you know, purchase of some sort of labor that will go into repairing it. So, there's, there's different concepts that we can, we can throw around, so.
I'd just like to say, I think it's a really great idea, and, uh, you know, if we wanted to have more conversation about it, we could certainly do a workshop or at least see the draft ordinance that you've come up with and decide then if we wanted to go that far with the workshop. Casey.
Councilmember Shaw.
Well, I think it's a great idea too, but I think we've already got the bones of it in place, and are we enforcing our current code, which talks about vacant structures in land, vacant structures and premises, must comply with the code and be maintained in a clean, safe, secure and sanitary condition as provided herein so as not to cause a lighting problem or otherwise adversely affect the public health, safety or quality of life. All vacant structures and premises thereof must appear to be occupied or appear able to be occupied with little or no repairs. I just had a recollection that we had the bones of this in our code already, and we just may, you know, need to take a look at enforcing it.
Um, a great, um, comment. This actually takes it a step further, and it's not just the appearance, it's actually taking a look at the envelope and making it, making sure the envelope is secure to weather, um, and, uh, along with just the facade improvements, but it's also looking at roofs and windows and also, um, deciding on structures and making sure that they are secure and sealed, so that we are protecting our investments. So, it's beyond what we have already, it, it takes it a little further.
Well, if anyone wants to look it up, it's fifteen point one zero point one seven zero.
Can you repeat that?
Fifteen point one zero point one seven zero.
Thank you. Councilmember Morrison.
I was just going to say that I, I agree with Councilmember Shaw and with Councilmember Ross, I'm, you know, enforce what we have, obviously, but I think this is really exciting, taking this a step further. One of the biggest complaints I hear as a council member, and I'm sure you guys hear, is, you know, the, the, the state of downtown, you drive through and it's just decrepit buildings, you know, and it's sad because there's so many really neat businesses down there trying to thrive, and everything else just has fallen apart. So, I, I, I'm excited for this, I'm, I'm ready to see an ordinance, but I understand if everybody else needs a workshop, but let's get the ball rolling.
Yeah, and this is a program that would work with, because a lot of the buildings downtown are owned by people who can no longer afford to, so this would kind of infuse money into the Good, Good Neighbor revolving fund as well, so there's, there's some ways that we can go about in assisting these, 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 uh, property owners into repairing their, their buildings.
There's one more.
Oh, please, Councilmember Cedar.
I appreciate it. Uh, I'm glad to hear that we're considering additional action, additional policies, procedures, ordinances and whatever. Um, I get a lot of input from citizens that, and from people from out of the area, thinking of coming to the area, and it's like, oh, downtown Aberdeen looks terrible, especially people drive through to go out to the beaches, although they get a really bad impression of Aberdeen simply because of our downtown. And I think there's a lot that can and should be done to try to enhance it, make it look better, so I'm glad we're considering some things, even, even if it just starts from a cosmetic level, uh, that's got to help a lot. Um, I, I had a discussion recently with, um, a local business person who provided some input to the fact that there are some business, uh, property owners that have some buildings downtown that would be reticent at this point in time to invest a lot of substantial capital dollars into their buildings because of the flood issues, and until the levy gets in place and helps prevent a lot of the flooding downtown, that's a problem, and also because of the current crime problems with, you know, we talked about boarded up doors and windows and things, yeah. I know one particular property owner, he says, I'm not taking the boards off of my building and to, and putting in new windows until they stop getting broken out. He's replaced windows multiple times, it's several thousands of dollars, and they keep getting broken out. And, uh, so those are some things that need to be looked at, but the things that we can do, that we should be doing, to the degree that we actually have adequate staff to do them, in enforcing our current codes and all that, we, we really should be moving forward in that, we got to do something, so thank you.
Councilmember Ellis.
I'm curious, um, what kind of registration fees are being talked about?
I don't think there's been a number actually talked about. It's just preliminary, and there's, basically, everything that we've mentioned is just to get the subject, uh, up and running, there's, there hasn't been an actual number.
I, I think the city of Seattle has a fee of like three hundred dollars a month, you know, obviously that's Seattle. For, for vacant buildings, and they have like very strict guidelines as to how the buildings need to look, if they're, if they're going to keep them vacant.
And inspection programs as well.
Correct.
I know, driving down, um, some of the downtown streets, it seems like it would be relatively easy and low cost to put up, um, vignette posters sort of, um, uh, what are they called? Vignettes of historic things happening, or this is what the store might have looked at, looked like back in the nineteen hundreds or something, just so that instead of blank window or whatever, it, it has some pizzazz. And for the few buildings that have been recently, um, either cleaned or painted, but it certainly does make a difference, and it would be wonderful to see more of that as a concerted effort in our downtown.
Lots of good ideas.
Uh, just one last couple of things, um, I'm just wondering, I'd, I'd like to see copy of the draft ordinance, but I'm also wondering in terms of enforcement and collection, if those, you don't have to answer this now, but absolutely those would need to be addressed. How would they be addressed, so?
Correct, we would, the thought is, right now, is we have our rental registration program, um, that we have set up, and that would run through that process, similar process to what we do now for rentals.
And it's not a hundred percent foolproof, that somebody's going to pay if they get in some sort of fee. It's, uh, you know, it's on the owner's system, I guess, for the most part, to participate in this community. I don't know, this is all just open for discussion. Any more on this item? Anyone? Okay.
All right, thanks for the feedback on that one. And then, one more discussion item, um, related to the RV Park Committee recommendations. So, in your council packet, um, there was a report, um, within that packet from the RV Park Committee, um, so at this point, we do have, I guess, a finished work product of what it might look like. Um, unfortunately, it is fairly cost prohibitive at this time. Um, so, for this item, not looking for like a council vote or decision, um, mostly just, um, the thought that the city is going to be shelving the project for the time being, um, retaining the design so that in the future, they could be utilized, um, for council consideration, um, if something were to change with the project, or maybe somebody came forward and, uh, was able to do some kind of ground lease or, you know, I guess, whatever might occur with this in the future. So, I'll just open it up to discussion if anyone has comments about the RV Park Committee and some of the stuff that came in, um, from the committee and their recommendations tonight.
Any questions? Councilmember Shaw.
So, the report says we're shelving it until the end of twenty-twenty-four because there might be more money becoming available and, and everything, so I just wanted to know whether taking it off the shelf would require council action, would we be given the opportunity to weigh that against other priorities? Um, I don't want to pre-authorize something two years from now that, you know, we haven't agreed to do yet.
That's a good question. Uh, the answer is, my idea of taking it off the shelf in twenty-twenty-four would be sending committed reports to the council requesting authorization to start seeking funding. So, yes, you would have a say in whether any type of work began on that project.
Thank you. While you're there, one other question. There's a lot of talk about revenue that, in there, that, that RV Park might generate, but not a lot about expenses, so I was curious about the statement in there where the RV Park would generate, you know, millions of dollars in revenue for the city, for example, one point two five million over five years. I was wondering if that's before or after expenses?
After.
Sir, I'm opening my mouth so much tonight, but just a lot of things to address. So, um, I've made my opinion or my perspective on the RV Park, uh, public before, but, you know, based on the projected revenue, which is only about at most one point seven million, that's over five years, that's only about three hundred and forty thousand a year, but based on the costs, I mean, it would take over fifty-five years to pay it off, um, even not including any potential bond or mortgage and debt and this interest that would have to be paid. Um, I just don't think that the city should be involved in, in anything regarding trying to put together an RV Park. Um, I'm certainly willing to vote and interested in voting tonight on shelving it, but I'd certainly like to see it shelved permanently, that's my perspective, thank you.
Councilmember Morrison.
Shelby, anything, because there's nothing for the council to consider, like expense-wise or priority-wise or anything like that.
If we voted.
Yeah, okay.
I'm kind of where Councilmember Cedar is at, I'd be happy to shelve it forever, and I brought a big long diatribe that I was going to go on about it, but I'll kind of just throw it point. Um, one of the things that just stuck out to me when I was reading that, you know, that we've already spent, you know, over a hundred thousand dollars on this, and, you know, they talked about, um, wanting to continue with it, you know, at a later date because of all the work that's already been put into it and everything, and I just, I don't see the logic in keeping and dumping money on something that is not a priority. You know, we have a police station that is wholly inadequate, and most voters and constituents and citizens in the city are concerned about public safety, not an RV Park. Um, we did a parks comp plan, and I'm sure everybody read the survey results from people that took that, most of them did not, RV Park didn't register for them. You know, they wanted to see safe, clean parks and better waterfront access. That, that was like the overwhelming majority of people that were surveyed, that's what, what they wanted, and, uh, you know, it's not, not a priority, I just, and, and I'm sorry, you know, it, it's hard to say no, especially when I know that there's people that have worked really hard on this, but it's going to be a no for me for now and forever.
Okay, anyone else? Councilmember Shaw.
So, I'm not a no now and forever, but to borrow one of, um, my council president Cashman's favorite phrases, no for now. But, um, honestly, we, we do have a lot of, of needs, and one of the things that keeps getting thrown out is the police and fire station, and one of the things that I want to ask us to do is not make that the catch-all for doing nothing, because some of these projects that staff is bringing for us do not take away from public safety or fire. For example, um, well, I'll just throw it out there, some of the funding that, um, Director, Administrator Clemens got for us to, um, start work on some things downtown, that's money that's not a takeaway from police or fire, it's an added thing that we can start working on that, and, and so the same with, um, the, the RV Park. The RV Park, though, in my view, does impact the general fund at a time when we're overspending in our general fund, so we should be very careful about any grant prospects that, um, but so far, I don't think the RV Park, other than staff time, has cost us catch, but we're getting to that point where, yes, we're going to have to ante up and have some skin in the game, and do we really want to do it when it came in? So, millions more than we thought it would cost, so that's, that's the catch, but also, when you look at parks, um, if we're going to prioritize parks, I really would like to see some parks energy put into, you know, we represent the public, and right now, there's a lot of public interest in how are we going to do a Kurt Cobain Park over there by the North Aberdeen Bridge? If we got time and energy to look at grants and where we might get money, I would like to see where, when we're talking about prioritizing our parks effort, um, I think that's the time that public would support us in investing time in seeing what we can do parks-wise in North Aberdeen. That's, um, and I, I support shelving this, um, at this time, reevaluating it in a couple of years, and since we're shelving it, I support having our Parks Department look more closely at what we can do in North Aberdeen.
I just had one more comment and question, so I, I agree with, you know, prioritizing the Kurt Cobain Memorial Park, but, but also Stewart Park, you know, I know that you brought it up, and, you know, that's a bummer about that grant, I was really excited for that, um, but make that a priority, that's what I hear from people so much, Stewart Park. Um, yeah, um, the other, the question that I had, I also saw it mentioned, that, um, we might look at other potential properties. Um, we've already spent a whole bunch of money evaluating this property and, and I hate the idea of putting an RV Park on that property, but to explore another property, I mean, we'd be looking at all kinds of feasibility studies again and everything, I mean, but, I don't know, it just doesn't make any sense to me. Is there a property in mind that, that the city has kind of identified?
A property that we have had some just general discussions about are adjacent to Lake Aberdeen, but it was more along the lines of a tent camping, uh, opportunity more so than an RV Park. Thank you.
Okay, any other discussions on this? We'll move on. More ordinances. More ordinances.
These are Councilmembers Shaw's.
Yep. Okay. Thank you. I'm still processing my thoughts on our discussion topic, I'm sorry, you guys are a lot more quicker than me. So, ordinances and resolutions. A resolution waiving competitive bidding requirements pursuant to RCW thirty-nine point oh four point two eight zero one A and thirty-nine oh four two eighty-one B, and confirming sole source procurement of wastewater open channel flow monitoring devices from that hatch company. I will be approve this resolution.
Motion was made second to approve this resolution. Any discussion? See none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
It'll be resolution twenty-two three dash one two.
Thank you, we have second reading of bill twenty-three oh four, an ordinance to decade a portion that becomes a street within block twelve of the flat of North Aberdeen, consistent with resolution twenty-two three oh one. I will be approve the second reading.
Second.
Motion was made second to approve the second reading. Any discussion? See none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed?
Mayor?
Go ahead.
I would move that we consider the second reading the third in place bill twenty-three oh four in final passage.
Second.
Motion was made second to suspend the rules and place the second reading into final passage. Is there any discussion? See none, that's a roll call vote.
Ellis?
Yes.
Brantley?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Catchman?
Yes.
Lawrence?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Ferchini?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Seedorf?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Motion passes Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
That would be ordinance six-six-nine-four.
Okay. Moving on to proclamations, I have a proclamation to read tonight.
Mayor?
Yes.
This is just a kind of order, because I think, I wanna make sure that I didn't mess up. Earlier in the meeting, I, we approved a resolution, but we didn't assign it a number, and I don't know if I was supposed to have done it here.
We assigned it up to twenty-three dash one.
Thank you.
Okay. City of Aberdeen proclamation. Whereas National Volunteer Week is an opportunity to recognize and honor countless individuals who selfishly invest in the lives of others. And whereas the city of Aberdeen joins other cities across our great state and nation to honor community volunteers during National Volunteer Week. And whereas volunteers in Aberdeen mentor children, support those who are less fortunate and vulnerable, beautify our green spaces, fundraise for charities, feed the hungry, and find unique and innovative ways to spread joy and meet the needs of others. And whereas volunteering weaves us together, strengthening the fabric of our community by sharing our time, talent and energy to support one another in the community in which we live. And whereas volunteers are essential partners in every aspect of Aberdeen's ability to serve our community and support our mission. And whereas experience teaches us that government alone cannot meet all our city needs, nor solve all of our social problems. And whereas the city of Aberdeen recognizes that volunteers make the difference in our neighborhoods, schools, churches, faith-based organizations, community and civic groups, and government agencies, and I encourage more people to join the ranks. And whereas each year, a week is designated in our nation for the purpose of recognizing those who give themselves, and I encourage all residents of Aberdeen to consider volunteering. And whereas the city of Aberdeen is thankful for all individuals, groups and businesses that have given time, energy and resources to our community through volunteer services. Now therefore, I Pete Shave, Mayor of Aberdeen, hereby proclaim April sixteenth through April twenty-second, twenty-twenty-three, to be National Volunteer Week in the city of Aberdeen, Washington. I call upon all of our residents to observe this week by celebrating the selfless work of the volunteers throughout our community. This proclamation is confirmed on April twelfth, twenty-twenty-three. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a speech. I don't know what you have to do in the first one.
About volunteers?
No, no.
Okay.
My complaint.
Okay, I'll, I'll, I'll get to you, Tony.
Thank you.
The next item is appointments. The Historical Preservation Commission, I want to reappoint Doug Orr, Dan Sears, Sally McCarthy, Dave Morris and Sylvia Dickerson. I'd like to appoint to the empty seats Lee Bacon and Alan Richrod. Ask for your approval.
We approve. The second.
Motion was made second to approve these appointments and reappointments. Is there any discussion? See none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. So, Tony, you came in after we had the public discussion time, so if there's, if there's no objection with the council, I would, because you're a special guy, Tony.
Oh, no, no, no.
I'd like, I'd like to give you the opportunity.
I got just two things to say, Mr. Mayor.
Would you come up to the podium?
Okay. Hello, my name is Pizan Dominic Tony, and I got two questions, one for the chief of police, and one for the council. I don't know how many people they use at this. I mean, I don't, because you have to have a pickup, you have to have somebody to pick it up, but, I don't know. But for the chief of police, it's illegal to have a truck, drone, nine o'clock at night, but I'm not away from my house, I am on TV, I see this drone on a bunch of lights, probably got a camera, I call nine oh one, I'm not getting a response from the police. Is it legal or what? What's my privacy?
Yeah, drones are regulated by the federal government. There's no, drones are regulated by the federal government, federal rules.
Legal?
Yes.
That time?
Yes, sir.
Where are my privacy?
Who, who should he call, you call then?
Yeah, I'll talk to you after the meeting, and we'll find out what happened last night.
Okay.
All right.
This is what it was, my question. And plus, I don't think many men have shown the capability, which they use this. Thank you.
Nice to see you, Tony. Is there anything else from the council?
Mayor, may I make a comment?
Sure.
I, I would like to thank those on the RV park committee for their time in putting all of this information for spending years, and I would especially like to thank Director Barnum for all the time and dedication that she put into this. I know that she put in years into this, all of this information, so I would really like to say thank you to all of them, and these are community members, a lot, some of them don't even live in Aberdeen, that dedicated their time to, and committed to this project, so thank you.
Thank you. Good point. Anything else?
Mayor Shave? I was just going to ask if the city had any kind of recognition program for employees, because I know that there's employees within the city that have done some pretty amazing things this year alone, so do we have any way to recognize people?
I would love to maybe bring a policy through the council for an employee recognition policy, as part of your strategic planning that all of you had said you would like to see, so that'd be great.
Okay. Anything else?
I move to adjourn.
Motion was made second to adjourn, if nobody objects, we are adjourned.
Good night, everybody.